Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. I'm going to read a land acknowledgement. We begin this inaugural meeting of Lennox and Addington County Council by acknowledging that the county is on traditional land that's been inhabited by indigenous peoples from the beginning. We thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. We recognize and deeply appreciate their historic connection to this place. Today, Lennox and Addington is still home to many indigenous and Métis people, and we are grateful to have an opportunity to meet here, work, and continue stewardship on this land. At this time, we will stand for the National Anthem. So, the first item on the agenda of our inaugural meeting this evening is a selection of the warden, and at this time, I will turn the chair over to our Clerk Tracy McKenzie.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Deputy Warden Townen and Councillor Richardson were nominated for the position of warden for the year 2025 at the nominations meeting on November 20th, 2024. I will now ask you to mark your ballots either for Deputy Warden Townen or Councillor Richardson for the position of warden for the year 2025. The warden for the year 2025 is Nathan Townen.
We aren't gonna... I think, actually Tracy will basically be in charge of proceedings through most of the meeting, so my last if...
Could we have a motion to destroy the ballots, please? Councillor Fritsch, seconded by Councillor Richardson. All in favor, motion is carried.
Well, I just want to begin by thanking my colleagues for placing their confidence and trust in me to lead us in this next year of council. I just want to mention past Warden Henry Hogg, who cannot be with us this evening. He's in our thoughts. He's battling in the ICU at LNA Hospital as we speak, and on behalf of us all, I wish him strength and healing. I also want to say that Henry has been a unique support and companion to me since I've been on county council, and I truly treasure the time I've had to befriend him and learn from him. I'm also grateful to John, not least of all for his service and leadership as warden in this past year, but likewise for his personal support. And then also, I'd like to thank Councillor Hegedorn, who at every opportunity has helped me to succeed, and I owe him very much. I also want to thank my partner Peggy, a constant source of encouragement and support, without whom I simply could not do this kind of work. Likewise, I must thank my parents, who have always taken great pride in my accomplishments, and to my close friends, some of whom who have been with me from the beginning of my elected journey and supported me, and they know who they are. Being an elected official in municipal politics today is a serious business. Some of that is because the municipal world has become more serious, more sophisticated, more complex. Municipalities have increasing responsibilities. As a result, for councillors, the standards of ethical conduct and professional competency continues to heighten. This isn't a bad thing, of course, but being an elected official is getting harder for other reasons, too. It's getting harder because while standards for conduct might be increasing, the public's actual expectations of politicians in general is declining, perhaps at an alarming rate. Cynicism and contempt for politics and politicians is widespread, and I doubt few would argue with me on that. It is becoming riskier for politicians, who suffer sometimes unrelenting and unimaginable abuse in all kinds of forms by members of the public, including threats and intimidation. And perhaps unsurprisingly, but disappointingly, it affects women and politicians from minority groups the most. There are many varied reasons for this, that would require a longer speech, of course, to elucidate, and much of it is beyond our control. Notwithstanding the obvious influence of the media and the way in which media has changed over the last decade, if I were to attempt to distill some of this, I would say that our society has, in many ways rightly, become impatient with increasing problems, decreasing standards of living, and what is regarded as dense inertia in conventional institutions to effect meaningful change. The trouble is, in this environment, it becomes harder to rally wider support for our democratic institutions and argue that we precisely need to strengthen them, not jettison them. And again, there is more that could be said on this. But the point is, in such times as these, when many, we see many turning to the old charm of authoritarianism. The attractiveness of authoritarians lies in their promise of deliverance, liberation from all the problems that we face. And when so much seems so wrong, and so much needs to be done, the promise of quick fixes that authoritarians purvey can be quite magnetic. But when complex problems are reduced to single-celled thoughts, supposedly solved by the quick flick of a wrist, then we in the business of democratic process and evidence-based decision-making are on a back foot. We are then seen as slow, ineffectual, encumbered by bureaucracy, corruption, or apathy. It may seem to us that in our corner of the world, we are powerless to turn the tide on some of this public opinion. But I take the same approach here as I do in my climate politics. Hope is the only ethical choice we have, and there is hope. Not a Pollyannaish hope, a tangible one, right here in this room. You see, we tend to think of Canadian politics as a tiered hierarchy, with the federal government at the top, the province in the middle, and we municipal minions most certainly scurrying at the bottom downstairs. I prefer to think that we have different orders of government rather than levels. But if for the moment we abide the traditional framing, my thinking is this: we have an opportunity to inspire the public, albeit in a small way, to reinvest their faith in our democratic institutions by showing them effective democratic governance from the bottom up. The despair and cynicism people have about politics is largely influenced by the very limited diet the media feeds them, which does not typically reflect a full picture of our institutions, in fairness to Parliament Hill, for instance. But nevertheless, when they see politicians performatively bickering and point-scoring like schoolchildren at question period in the House, that is how they think politics functions writ large. And because these are real, recorded proceedings, the evidence is hard to counter. Well, in the face of perceived childishness, we have an opportunity to be the adults in the room. It may seem paradoxical, but one of the most progressive, forward-thinking ways in which we can approach these challenges in our capacity is to conserve and showcase the traditional values that lie at the heart of our democratic institutions, that we, at the municipal order, largely still practice. We practice the seemingly ancient, forgotten art of genuine debate, where it's possible to suppose that you just might be right, and I might be wrong, and that maybe if we both suspend our perspectives for a brief moment, we might understand each other better. You see, I think we take for granted in this chamber just how fortunate we are to be able to practice and maintain effective democratic decision-making. County council is not a blood sport. It's a team sport, where each of us comes here to work for the team. Each of us comes here to consider how best to govern an organization that serves a diverse public over a huge geographic area to the tune of millions and millions of dollars. No one here asks what's in it for me. We always ask, what more can we be doing? How can we help each other? How are your needs different in your lower tier than mine, and how can we address them all fairly? We speak to one another with respect as colleagues, even friends. We don't raise our voices. We don't pepper one another with insults and cast aspersions. One of the most sacred treasures I find of our municipal order of government is that it is nonpartisan. We're able to hold differing ideological perspectives and hold them in tension and arrive at shared agreement. The symbols that adorn the outward appearance of what we do might seem dated to some, perhaps, maybe not monarchists like me, but the beating heart of what we do and how we do it matters, and it's worth protecting with everything we have. My message is to encourage us not to underestimate how important our example of good governance and democratic process is, never more so than now. I'll conclude with what I hope should now be obvious. I am so proud of what we do in this place. I am proud of all of you, and I am beyond proud to serve the people of our beautiful county as warden. So to you, my colleagues, to our brilliant exemplary staff, and to our great citizens and communities of Lennox and Addington County, I say, "Go team." Thank you. In the tradition of past Warden Hogg and past Warden Wise, I'm going to skip the congratulations section. And so we can move to the selection of deputy warden, and I again will pass that to the clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The floor is now open for nominations for the position of deputy warden for the county of Lennox and Addington for the year 2025. Councillor Wise?
I nominate Councillor Hegedorn.
Do we have a seconder for that? Councillor Fritsch? Second call for nominations for the position of deputy warden?
I nominate Terry Richardson.
Do we have a seconder for that? Councillor Davidson? Third and final call for nominations for the position of deputy warden for the year 2025. Seeing no further nominations, the nominees are able to speak in the order they were nominated, so Councillor Hegedorn, if you'd like to speak. Sure.
I'd like to start by saying, you can try to not be complimented or congratulated, but congratulations, Warden Townen. Well deserved. So, good evening, Warden Townen, council, staff, and the viewers of this meeting. Thank you for this opportunity to share some thoughts regarding the opportunity to be deputy warden. First, I would like to thank Councillor Wise and Councillor Fritz for making it possible for me being considered for deputy warden. I would like to share some of my background and some of my expectations of the position of deputy warden. Most, some of you may know, but I was elected to township council as a councillor in the 2010 election. After two terms as councillor, I was fortunate enough to be elected deputy mayor. In a unique situation, before the term was completed, the mayor of the day was elected to provincial government, leaving the mayor's position vacant. I stepped up and filled the mayor's role, and then was appointed mayor for the remainder of the term. During the last election, I was successfully elected as mayor. These successive advancements within the township also means I am in my second term as county councillor. Prior to the term, 2024 to 2018, 2014 to 2018, I was county council alternate, and due to circumstances at the time, I routinely attended county council meetings representing the mayor or deputy mayor of the day. I also attended additional meetings as a spectator to become well-informed of the proceedings and the business decisions. These included meetings when significant issues were addressed and budget meetings, those ones I especially attended. Through this time, working with the county, I have had the pleasure of working with amazing staff, learning from many wardens and councillors, and gleaning knowledge while observing and interacting in the discussions. I would like to believe I had a role in advancing the county and improving life for our residents. Until recently, I was of the understanding that I could not be in the warden's or deputy warden's position due to a potential conflict with my employment. However, while clarifying some potential conflicts with the integrity commissioner regarding the township, I also clarified the same regarding county council. I indicated to him I realized I could not be warden, but do not want to be in conflict of interest as a councillor either. The integrity commissioner clarified both as a councillor, as a deputy warden, or as a warden. To my surprise, there was no additional concerns. It was basically the same as if I was a councillor. And as a side note, I'm very thankful for the ability to work with an integrity commissioner to ensure that there are no conflicts of interest which would be detrimental to the county and to myself. It also had the additional benefit, in this case, due to the clarification on ability to potentially be deputy warden. So with this clarification and the background knowledge, a strong belief developed that I should step up and make myself available to fill the deputy warden position. Being deputy warden would allow me to, the opportunity to become more knowledgeable of the county workings. It also allows me to work closer with staff to share knowledge and support advancing the county. The role of supporting the warden will be a growth opportunity I would look forward to. Since 2014, while attending and working as a county councillor, there have been many successes. New and rehabilitated ambulance bases, improvements on highway maintenance, which again benefits the lower tier as well, unique and innovative constructions such as rubbleizing concrete pavement, library upgrades, economic development growth are just but a few successes to mention. During these successes, a great working relationship between the county and lower tier has been maintained. With the challenges we are facing on many fronts, this collaborative and respectful working relationship must be maintained. We can accomplish anything when we work together. So, in closing, I hope this has provided a snapshot of my experience, thoughts, and expectations. All of this has made me believe this is where I am to be at this time, to be in the place to do the work needed to leave the county in a better place than we found it. If successful, I look forward to advancing the county while expanding my personal knowledge and boundaries. Thank you.
Councillor Richardson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to start off by congratulating Warden Townen on the election as warden for the county of Lennox and Addington. I've said this many times before this council, that there's eight people sitting around this desk. Each and every one of them have the ability to do the job that Warden Townen is going to do for the next calendar year 2025, and I have confidence in his ability. I'd congratulate Councillor Hegedorn on the nomination for the deputy warden position. Simply being nominated is a very special thing, and you should be honored to have been nominated for the position of deputy warden. I'd also like to thank Councillor Calver and Councillor Davidson for their confidence in me in nominating for me for the position of deputy warden. I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time. This is the fourth time I've stood at this podium, applied for positions, either warden or deputy warden, in the past two years. I think each and every one of the people that are in this room now know what my history is. Thirty years of police work, a very successful career doing a number of different things. I'm now in my sixth year of public service, which puts me at 36 years of being in the public eye. First of all, as the War II councillor in the town of Greater Napanee, and then winning the position of mayor in the town of Greater Napanee. Over the past two years, it's been challenging. We've had a number of high-profile, high-priority things, some of them very good, and I know I mentioned this the last time, with respect to the Goodyear Project, and some of them not so good. We've had to just recently release a report with respect to our municipality with respect to procurement. But it doesn't matter whether it's the good news or the bad news. It's the fact that we take the bull by the horns and we answer the call, and that's what you're going to get in me, a person that doesn't shy away from the tough decisions. Will share the easy decisions and make the municipality, the county of Lennox, act in a better place to be. I myself would be completely honored, should I be awarded this position as the deputy warden. Over the past two years, I know there's been a number of occasions where either the warden or the deputy warden was unavailable for a number of function within the town of Greater Napanee, and I've had to represent the county at that point, and it was very honored to be able to do that. We've got some tough times ahead of us. It's not all tough, and there's lights at the end of the tunnel, but we've got some tough times. Our economy is fragile. We have people living in our parks. We have people that have some severe, severe addiction problems, and there's an overall erosion of society that has put our municipalities into positions that we've never been for or never seen before, especially in small municipalities such as Napanee or Loyalist or Addington Highlands or Stone Mills. It's going to be a tough slug to get through these tough times, but I know we can do it. We are in a position to be head and shoulders above other municipalities, and I know that we're going to be able to do that. we're going to be able to do that. There are some sunny days ahead, and I know it sounds funny to use that term, but there really is. We've got some good times coming to us, and we're going to take advantage of them, but they just don't happen. You have to reach out, you have to take them. You can't be afraid of failure. You have to reach out and work hard to get those things, and that's what we intend to do with this municipality, with this county, and each and every one of our lower tiers. In closing, I'd like to once again thank each and every one of you that are around this table. I have all the confidence in the world, and I know that by working together, both as a council and by neighboring lower-tier governments, we are going to be able to succeed. And I'm quite confident that we will be the poster child for many, many, many municipalities in this province. The County of Lennox and Addington's name is going to be heard and seen from one end of the province to the other. So I thank you for the opportunity and wish everyone well and a Merry Christmas, because I don't believe we're going to be seeing each other between now and the Christmas time. So Merry Christmas to all. Have a safe and healthy Christmas season. And of course, we're all thinking of Counselor Hogg, who's going through some tough times, who has dedicated his whole life to public service, and is having some difficult times now, but Henry is a fighter, he's a battler, and we know that he's going to pull through this. So if you're watching Henry, or if you're going to read it in the Nappany Bureau, the Kingstonist tomorrow, we all wish you well, and we hope to see you around the table soon. So, thank you.
I will ask members of council now to mark their ballots, either for Counselor Hegedorn Deputy Warden for the year 2025 is Jim Hegedorn. Could we have a motion to destroy the ballots? Counselor Fritsch, Counselor Davison, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the 2025 Proposed Schedule of Meetings. So the recommendation is that the November 22, 2024 Staff Report Repropose Schedule of Council and Committee Meetings be noted and received, and further that council approve the 2025 Schedule of Council and Committee Meetings. Can I get a motion to that effect? Counselor Wise, Counselor Hegedorn, any comments on meetings for 2025? No? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, County Council Committee Appointments. So, we just go through them?
There's a report to note.
Oh, right, yes, there is a report to note and receive. So the recommendation is that the December 5, 2024 Staff Report Recomitee Appointments be noted and received. Counselor Fritsch, seconded by Counselor Richardson. All those in favor? Motion is carried. You'll have to guide me a little bit through this, Tracy. So, we'll start with Economic Development Coalition.
So, the list is before you of the appointments that the members of council would like to go on. We have first choice Counselor Richardson and Counselor Hogg. It is two members plus the Warden. We also have Counselor Wise and Counselor Davison as second choice, and Counselor Hegedorn, Counselor Calver, and Counselor Fritsch, it's their third choice. So, we can have an election, or we can have the ones that it is their first choice. It's council's wishes.
I'm just looking for a motion, if someone wanted to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that be Counselor Richardson and Counselor Hogg.
So the motion is that Counselor Richardson and Counselor Hogg would be appointed to the Economic Development Coalition. Can I get a seconder? Counselor Wise, any comments? Motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. So I'll just make note of that. And then now, we come to the Board of Health. Obviously, council's received updates from me about the imminent existence of the Southeast Health Unit and the request from the outgoing Board of KFLNA and the incoming Southeast Transition Team to request my reappointment to that, so I will stand my name for that, if you want to do the vote on that, Tracy, since I'm in it. If someone wants to make a motion, one way or the other, about the Board of Health? Counselor Wise?
Yes, I'll move that Warden Townen to retain that position. There seems to be a demand for your services there, and you think you'll still have time to devote to that, so I'll make that motion.
Okay, the motion is to reappoint. Can I get a seconder? Counselor Richardson, any comments? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, Prince Edward Lennox and Addington Social Services Committee. So there are two positions here, and there are three members that have put it as their number-one choice, what are council's wishes. Counselor Wise?
I'm willing to withdraw my name as first choice, just to make this simple. I've done plenty of committee work over the last year. I wouldn't be greatly disappointed if I wasn't on any committee, not that I'm not willing to serve if so chosen, but I would be willing to just take my name off that number-one there if both Counselor Davison and Counselor Fritsch are still keen on serving on Pallas.
Could you make a motion?
I will move that I be removed.
And did those two be appointed?
Indeed.
Okay. So that's, to clarify, that's Counselor Davison and Counselor Fritsch for Pallas. Can I get a seconder for that? Counselor Hegedorn, any comment? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Then the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. So there are two positions for that. Only one has declared it as their first choice. That's Counselor Calver. Counselor Hegedorn, you're looking like you.
Counselor Hegedorn hasn't received anything yet, and Fritsch?
Yeah.
I'll remove my name as the number-two.
As the number-two, perfect, okay. So that would leave Counselor Calver and Counselor Hegedorn. To that effect? Thanks, Counselor Richardson. I'll take that. Seconder? Counselor Fritsch, any comment? All those in favor? Motion is carried. And then Lafarge? So we only have one there.
I'll move Counselor Hegedorn continue on that committee.
So moved, seconded by Counselor Richardson. Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Madam Clerk, are you satisfied with those proceedings? Yep. We don't need to destroy any ballots, because there were none, which is great. Just confirmation of proceedings, then. So, can I get a mover for confirmation of proceedings? Counselor Hegedorn, seconded by Counselor Calver. Any comment on that? Call the question. All those in favor? Motion is carried. And then can I get a motion to adjourn? Counselor Wise, seconded by Counselor Davison. All those in favor?